Good evening and welcome to the 2020 Livonia PTSA Council Candidates Forum for the Livonia Public School Board. As many of you know, the Livonia PTSA Council is a non-governing support body for the 22 individual school unit PTAs in Livonia Public Schools, offering guidance, training, and advocacy to the parents, teachers, students, and allies throughout the district. My name is Rob Druswicki. I am the Corresponding Secretary and PR Chair. Joining me tonight are Kelly Doomer, Immediate Past President, Livonia PTSA Council, Michael Testa, Advocacy Chair, Mandy Gersonbrandt, Sitting President, 2020-2021 School Year. Mandy will be acting as our Technical Coordinator and Zoom Coordinator tonight. Your moderators and question askers for the evening are going to be Kelly and Mike, and I am your host, as oftentimes I tend to be. Tonight, we're also honored to have all six candidates that are running for the four open seats on the Livonia School Board. In alphabetical order, Madeline Acosta, Tammy Bonnefield, Karen Bradford, Dan Centers, Crystal Frank, and Nicole Hoskins-Gudrow. Our format is simple. We'll begin with opening statements from each candidate, which will be followed through the center by a Q&amp;A session, which is a round robin style with equal time for each candidate, the order of which was drawn shortly before we started this recording. And it will be followed up by closing statements from each of the candidates. All of these rules were sent out to our school board hopefuls. Beforehand, I won't bother reading through all of them. However, I will make a special note of the the rule, second to last, at the end of each question round, a candidate can request a bonus time. They will each be allowed up to two of these requests, allowing them 30 seconds of bonus time to clarify or add earlier comments to specific questions that were asked throughout that round. Obviously, I don't think I need to say this personally, but after the week we've had, I'm sure it can bear a little reassertion. So first, we will start with opening statements. And again, by the random order that was transferred, each candidate will have three minutes to introduce themselves to someone they feel they would be a great fit for the Livonia School Board. First up will be Karen Bradford.
Good evening. I am Karen Bradford, and I'm running for reelection to the school board. Did I start that?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, the timer didn't go on. I'm sorry. Or is it on? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, I can't hear you, Mike.
The "go" means go.
Oh, sorry about that. I apologize. Okay.
I'll start you over. Ready, go.
Good evening. I'm Karen Bradford, and I'm running for reelection to the school board. First, I want to thank the LPTSA Council for hosting this forum. It gives our community an opportunity to learn about the candidates and hear firsthand some of our thoughts and opinions. I'm no stranger to PTA. In fact, it's a very comfortable arena for me, as I have been very active in the Livonia PTA for over 20 years. This career span in PTA started at Jackson Center and this past year finished at Stevenson. I've held leadership roles such as President, Vice President, and Secretary at every building my children attended at some point. I'm a strong PTA supporter. Anyone who knows me knows that I'm pretty much of a consummate volunteer, and I cannot say no to any type of volunteer work in the classrooms, team mom, senior all-night party coordinator, to name a few. Any activity going on in a building, I will be there supporting. You could say that being involved in the schools was one of the reasons I was a great candidate for school board, but not the only one. I'm a parent of four awesome kids who graduated from LPS. Being a parent has offered me the rich perspective on our district's curriculum and the types of strong academic programs which are offered in LPS. My children benefited greatly from a variety of these wonderful programs. I have a degree in elementary education, and so I'm very familiar with education in general and the importance of a good, quality, sound education. I've served as a substitute teacher in LPS, as well as been an employee at Webster. I know and am very familiar with many buildings and programs. All these experiences as a parent, volunteer, and employee propelled me to have a vested interest and a passion in serving on the board. I am currently serving in my fourth year. Being a trustee on the school board is a labor of love for me. I am and will continue to be an advocate for all students to work diligently in collaboration with my peers and to keep quality education a top priority in Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you, Karen. Impeccably timed.
Thank you.
Hence the reason to see the "go." So next up, we have Nicole Hoskins. Nicole, go ahead.
There's that unmuting issue that you mentioned. Thank you for the invitation to be here with you tonight. It's great to be able to be here and introduce myself and meet you all as well. Again, I'm Nicole Hoskins-Gudrow. My motivation for seeking a seat on the school board began with my experience as a parent in the district. I have two sons, both of whom are in elementary school, and I think that this is a strong district with a lot to offer families. But what I have observed is what I perceive to be some areas of improvement that I think could make us even stronger and a more highly performing district. I believe that those areas include things like continuing efforts to increase academic rigor and also prioritizing and understanding of diversity. I believe that my personal experience as a parent, as well as my professional experience in training and skills building around items like diversity, can be an asset to the district. The district has adopted an educational philosophy of meeting the needs of every student, and I want to work toward ensuring that we're meeting the needs of every student and every family within the district. Right there in our stated collective commitments, LPS has said that we are innovative in our pursuits of excellence. And I really believe that if we are to uphold that commitment, then both innovation and excellence require that we meet the challenges of the world around us by preparing students for the world outside Livonia, by being both academically and socially aware. And I'd like to be a part of the effort in continuing to drive forward that mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Next up, we have Tammy Bonnefield. You're on mute, Tammy.
Hi. Sorry, guys. My name's Tammy Bonnefield. I'm running for Livonia Public School Board. I'm currently finishing my eighth year, and I truly enjoy my time on the board. I have been continuously and actively involved with the Livonia Public Schools since my two children were in childcare at the Jackson Center. We started Tristan when he was 18 months, and he is 22 now. And Trevor started when he was eight weeks, and he just turned 20. I'm proud to say that my oldest son graduated from Stevenson High School. Actually, both my sons just graduated from Stevenson High School and have gone on to Tristan's at Michigan Tech and Trevor is at Schoolcraft. I believe that education is a key to every child's future. I believe that public education is the best way to provide equal access to all children. I will continue to take those beliefs to the board table, working to provide quality education for all children. I think that one of the key things that I always told my kids was the more education you have, the more choices you have. So I really believe in public education, the idea of what we can do with publication and hope to be able to continue to make public education and, in particularly, Livonia Public Schools a great place and to continue moving forward. We certainly don't rest on our laurels, and we keep improving every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Next up, we have Madeline.
Good evening. Thank you, LPTSA Council, for hosting this forum. I am running for the Livonia School Board. A little bit about me, I have been a substitute teacher with Livonia Public Schools since 2018, and I am currently on a long-term assignment in a first-grade class in the trenches with our educators. I have two sons attending middle school and high school in our district, and my husband is a proud football coach at our local high school. My career experiences include serving as a special education teacher, as well as a community homeless liaison in southwest Detroit for over 10 years. As a community liaison, I was tasked with hosting parent meetings and bridging relationships between the school and the community that we served. As a homeless liaison, I was responsible for identifying student needs and making sure that the students that met the definition of homeless for the McKinney-Vento Act, that they had all the resources that they needed to be successful in school. I also sat on a national board as a VP of Collegiate Operations and a Risk Manager. My experiences with Livonia Public Schools range from room parent, sorry, to current PTSA President and a member of the Summer's Return to Learn Task Force. I believe that representation matters, and that means that there should be voices of parents, educators, and students at the decision-making table. Some of my experiences have given me the perspective to represent the voices of parents, educators, and community stakeholders. I look forward to continuing to serve this community with a seat at that decision-making table.
Thank you, Madeline. Next up, we have Crystal.
Hello. Thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you to the Livonia PTSA Council for hosting this. You provide invaluable service to our community, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of you leaders that are working on this, but working in our schools every day. You make a difference within our district, for our students, for our staff, as well as for the parents out there. To be able to partner with LPTSA, the partnership between parents and LPTSA is invaluable, and so I want to thank each one of you. I got started in Livonia Public Schools volunteering and being a leader from the first PTA mom in my son's kindergarten class that reached out to me and said, "Hey, we could use some help." And I think that's a great way to engage families, and that's why I'm running for the school board. Livonia Public Schools is personal to me. I have four children in Livonia Public Schools. I have one in 11th grade, one in 9th grade, one in 7th grade, and a little second grader. So this is personal to me. I've been involved in the district for over 10 years at several different schools, not only as a volunteer, but as a leader, as a president, as a vice president of the PTA, in the rooms, as a motor mom, doing different things in the building. So I am familiar with the buildings and what goes on in our buildings. As a district with over 14,000 students, there are many complexities to LPS, and our district needs experienced leaders to navigate the changing dynamics. As a current Board of Education trustee, I've been certified by the Michigan Association of School Boards as an Award of Merit recipient for my hours of training. I'm not just ready to lead. I have been a leader, and I look to you to continue to support me on Board of Education.
Thank you, Crystal. And finally, for the opening statements round, we have Dan Centers.
Thank you, Rob. So it's been a weird year. Normally, I would have the opportunity to see more of our PTSA people in person and say thank you in person for all the work that you do. Since that hasn't been the case, I want to take that time now. We have one of the best PTAs in the state, if not the best, so thank you for all that you're doing. And this forum's just another example of leadership. So I was born and raised in Livonia, as was my wife, products of Livonia Public Schools. And it was my experience in Livonia Public Schools that inspired me to be a classroom teacher. After college, I went and did that, got involved in education policy. And although I no longer work as a classroom teacher, I'm still involved in policy at the state level. The opportunity to serve in my local school board is obviously an amazing experience. We have such an opportunity to provide great opportunities for kids to learn every day. We have the chance to put resources in the classroom. That's been one of my main focuses on my time on the board. And I think if you look back over the past several years, you've seen more in the classroom. You've seen us updating the rooms and materials, and you see that the tools that teachers have have expanded. Want to continue that work, want to continue making our district even better than it is right now. So thank you so much for taking the time to listen here today.
Thank you very much, Dan. So that concludes our opening statements round. Now I will hand the reins, so to speak, over to our Immediate Past President and our Advocacy Chair, Mike Testa and Kelly Doomer.
Thank you, Rob. So we're going to go right into the questions, and the first question is going to be from Nicole. What is the role of a school board member, and if elected or as a current board member, what do you believe are the responsibilities to the community and the students in our district? This question will have 60 seconds.
Do I wait for the "go" sign? There we go. I believe the role of a school board member is to be aware of all of the pressing issues within the school district and, to a certain extent, within the greater community. To be aware of the needs of the student community, the parents, the professionals that work in the schools, and to be prepared to collaborate with the other members of the board to develop solutions to solving whatever problems or issues arise. I believe that my responsibility to the community would be to make myself educated on all of the issues that are important to every family in the district, and then to be collaborative, to be educated on the issues, to be willing to work toward solutions and produce outcomes so that we actually see improvements where they're needed.
Thank you, Nicole. Dan, Tammy, it's your turn, and I'm going to hit the "go" button when you guys start talking.
Thank you. I'd like to say I more than believe in what the responsibilities are for a school board trustee. I live them every single day. We, as a master board member with the master certified board member with the MASB, I've learned so much over the eight years regarding how to handle our positions at the board's table, where we go, what we can do, and I think the biggest thing that we learned was where our swim lane was. And I think when we work in concert with the administration, with the superintendent, that we get so much done because we are all working in the same direction and following the different things that we're supposed to do. And one of the biggest things that we're required to do is hire and evaluate the superintendent. Thank you.
Madeline, it's your turn for this question.
Okay, I believe that the role of the school board is to adopt policies, to hire and evaluate the superintendent, to align our budget with the long-term strategic financial goals. As a community, in terms of my responsibility to the community, I believe that our role is to listen and make sure that all voices of our community stakeholders are being heard and represented in the decision-making process. In terms of students and staff at large, I believe our responsibility is to make sure that they have a safe learning environment that is conducive to their educational goals.
Thank you. Crystal, it's your turn.
Thank you. As a school board member, our role for sure is to set the priorities of the district, and then to align the budget to meet those goals. One of the biggest things that we do is we need to make sure that we are evaluating where our financial resources are going, and are they going to meet our goals as a district? Are they aligning with our employee resources, with our fiscal resources, with the actual buildings that we have? What are we doing to align that together? The other piece is evaluating the superintendent, and we spend a lot of time going over our curriculum, going over our employee capacity, what we're doing to train and teach employees in terms of evaluating and hiring our superintendent. So I think all of those pieces fit together to make the role of a board superintendent, along with being advocates for all students and being a liaison between the community and the district.
Thank you. Dan, it's your turn.
All right. Thank you. So I think the biggest thing is putting in the work, and there's a lot that you can get distracted by when you're a school board member. But ultimately, we have to make sure that we're doing the diligence, duties of educating ourselves, making sure we show up, be in the community, and ultimately put ourselves in the position of students and think about what they need and what can we do to advance their learning. They only get a short time with us, 12 years typically, if we're lucky, and we got to make the most of that time. I've never missed a vote in my six-and-a-half years on the board. That's because I'm super dedicated to making sure that our students have what they need and just putting their needs first and really persevering and working hard to make sure that our district advances.
Thank you, Dan. Karen, you'll close out this question.
Thank you. There are three main goals. There's lots of different things as a role on the school board. The three goals are to hire and evaluate that superintendent. We do that on an annual basis. We set policies for the district, and we set long-term goals and align our finances to those goals. That is our role, and it is true. We need to stay in our swim lane. We do not deal with the daily rigors of the day-to-day operations that go on in our buildings. We are responsible and tasked with mainly those three things. And if anybody has any questions, we get those people pertaining to day-to-day. We send those people to our cabinet people to deal with that. In addition, our schools, we want our kids to have the highest quality of education possible, and that's what our goal is, is to advocate for our kids and run the best program in academics.
Thank you, Karen. I'm going to hand it over to Kelly for question two. Oh, sorry. This question, anyone like to take their bonus turn? Okay. Kelly, it's your turn for question two.
Hello, everyone. Question two is going to start with Tammy. If future budget cuts are needed, what would you prioritize and deprioritize? Tammy, you're first.
So in light of current school funding, and we have been faced recently with the potential during the COVID scare that there were potential budget cuts that may be needed. One of the things that we have been able to do over the last several years is to increase our fund balance so that we have money to be able to ride out some of these storms. So the first thing I would do is make sure that we try and keep as many programs intact and keep a high level of staff and make sure that we're able to provide those services. And hopefully, what will happen is it'll swing. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I forgot to mention 45 seconds for this question. Next is Madeline.
Okay, if future budget cuts are needed, I would prioritize staff. We can do everything with minimal resources, but we need our staff to provide instruction, and they should be our priority. I would deprioritize probably additional funding for those testings and assessments that we and staff tend to find that are unnecessary or maybe too many and find other ways to receive the same outcomes.
All right. Thank you. Next is Crystal.
Thanks so much. In terms of priorities, we have so many priorities in the district, but one is class size. I am a huge advocate for maintaining smaller class sizes. It makes a difference. No matter what is in your classroom, if you are able to see kids, if you are able to connect with kids, you can handle if you have somebody with a learning disability, you are better able to differentiate your instruction when you have smaller class sizes. And so one of my biggest areas of advocating is for smaller class sizes. So keeping our class sizes smaller would be my biggest priority, is to make sure that we have the staff to be able to keep those class sizes so we're not missing anything in education and instruction.
All right. Thank you. Next is Dan.
Thank you. Yeah, I can speak from experience. When I first got on the board, we had about a $370 per pupil cut to education. So we had to make some really tough choices, and what we did is we went to the community. We kind of laid out what things could be done and explained to people what the consequences of those would be. And because of that, we sold some properties. We did cell phone towers. We did innovative things to supplement our budget. And then we also prioritized non-classroom cuts. So ultimately, I think that's the priority, is to engage the community, but also focus on making the classroom the priority.
Okay, next is Karen.
Thank you. We definitely need to prioritize our classrooms and making sure our students have the quality programs that they need and deserve every single day. So I would agree that we do not want to cut staff. Staff is vital for our kids to achieve and to get the programming that they need. We might even enter into some cooperative agreements. I know at one point, we partnered with the Plymouth Canton Kitchen Service and did things like that. But definitely, a priority is maintaining quality staff and low class sizes, no doubt.
Okay, last is Nicole for this question.
Thank you. I'm going to agree with some of the other candidates that staff is amongst the most important priorities, and so that would include instructional and support staff, and also making sure that we have resources available for professional development and whatever other resources they need. In terms of things I would be looking to deprioritize, I would be looking for opportunities to maybe evaluate non-essential budget items or non-urgent capital expenditures that could perhaps wait for another year, another budget cycle. Thank you.
All right. Did anyone want to use their bonus time on this question? Nope. All right. Back to Mike.
Thank you. Question three, we'll be starting with Madeline. Not all 14,000-plus LPS students learn in the same way or at the same rate. How do you, as a board member, plan to support our students with unique learning needs? This question will have 60 seconds.
I agree, and not all of the students with unique learning needs are students that are identified receiving special support. So I think that making sure that we are looking at the programs and the services and the staff that we have in our buildings to support our students and making sure that the students that are needing the support, so not just, like I said, those students that have been identified, but identified from their teachers as needing that additional support, that we are making time for them to have that support staff that is so essential to them having that one-on-one time to really receive that additional instruction.
Okay, thank you, Madeline. Crystal, it's your turn for question three.
Thanks so much. This is one of our challenges as a district. When kids come to us, everyone is at such different levels. Not all kindergartners start at the same level. There is a vast differentiation of students' needs and what they have the ability and capability of learning. And so this is one of our biggest priority areas, is how can we differentiate learning? How can a teacher, how can we build in some intervention blocks so somebody can come in, so we can have a reading specialist come in and work with that student to be able to differentiate them while the other students are doing something else, but this student is not losing the instruction? So that's one of the pieces that we really are, as a district, working on, to be able to provide things that are differentiated for different students. To be able to provide some before-school, we invested last year in some before-school teaching. So parents can send their kids to school before school. They can have one-on-one instruction with that teacher to help them grow in areas that we've identified that they need to grow in, if they're below grade level, if they have some issues. And so I think that differentiated instruction is the biggest key to that.
Thank you, Crystal. Dan, it's your turn.
Sure. First of all, I'm proud that we offer a lot of different programs that engage students, whether it's a cat, maycat, cap. A lot of different programs in our district that are really great. But teachers do have to differentiate in the classroom, and our teachers who are mostly really great do that every day on a daily basis. And our teachers who are mostly really great do that every day on a daily basis. But, you know, that's really hard to do. And it takes up a lot of teacher time and it takes a lot of diligence for our teachers. That's why class size is important, keeping them as low as possible. So student, teachers can look at each individual student and make a plan that's appropriate for them and make sure they're engaged every lesson, every day.
Thank you, Dan. Karen, it's your turn for question three.
Thank you. This is almost a two-part question. In our, within our classrooms, we have unique learning needs. So every student should receive high-quality differentiated instruction or what we call tier-one instruction. And then we also have title-one kids that may receive some federal funding and additional support systems in place. Going broader, as Dan said, we have unique learners. Everybody's different. We have so many different programs to offer in the Lavonie Public Schools. We have a, a special ed department that is known throughout the state, so we offer a special ed program. But we also offer a multitude of different programs at different levels for our different learners. With the Nijiiro Japanese School, we have May Cat, A-Cat, we have a gifted program. There are, I could go on and on about the programs. We just don't have enough time. So maybe I'll get it in another question. So yeah, lots of different learners, for sure.
Thank you, Karen. Nicole, it's your turn.
I'm going to agree with something that was said earlier, that differentiated instruction is very, very important because students do live, learn in different ways and, and different methodologies are effective with different students and different learning styles. What I would like to do is evaluate how it is that we're identifying students that don't necessarily, you know, that, that aren't currently identified as needing that differentiated instruction. And then once we have that information, what are we doing with it? Do we have policies or procedures in place to make sure that every student is getting the type of instruction that's going to be most effective for their learning style? And then I'd also like to know, what are we doing when we receive feedback that a student is, you know, not getting that differentiated instruction or not having a learning experience that's really tailored to their own individual needs? And then what's our, what's our feedback cycle? Like, what are we doing with that feedback once we have it? So I'd really like to evaluate the resources that are currently available and, and identify any gaps and then develop a strategy to address those gaps.
Thank you, Nicole. Tammy, you can close out this question.
Thank you very much. For me, I think that we have, every student is a unique learner, no matter where they are at. Just because they have an IEP or other tested, that they're tested and have, have unique needs. I think every student has a unique need. As a parent, I was a parent of a student that was, had tough time and weren't able to get an IEP with them. And so for me, I advocate very strongly. And I think there's more to student learning than just academics. We also need to take into account the social and emotional needs of our students. We need to bring in the support staff to be able to help those kids. We need to be able to have interventions so that we can take these kids and help them and help to understand where they are at so that they can get the best out of their education.
Thank you, Tammy. Would anyone like to use bonus time for this question? No? Okay, I'll hand it back over to Kelly.
All right. Question number four. What do you believe the role of the school board is in advocating for diversity, inclusion, and equal representation of individuals of different races and gender identities for LPS to provide more equitable educational opportunities for our students? We're going to start with Crystal and you have 60 seconds.
Thank you. I want to go back for a second. I think on that bonus time, any of us would be happy to talk for a long time on each question. So when we say we don't want to go with our bonus time, it's only because we know there are lots of questions that we want to get to. I think any of us could go back and speak to that, that bonus, that bonus question and, and give thorough examples, but we would be here all night. So in terms of this, this is such a huge priority for our district right now. We are engaging in an equity study right now in terms of some of our staff being able to meet with Andrea. I think the staff, the board has, has expressed to Andrea our desire to be more equitable in educate, in our education. And so one of the things we've done is that America in Me series where we've, we've shown it to our, our district. We've had people come in, we've had a debate, a, a discussion about it. And I think that being able to look at where we can improve in all of our hiring practices, I think our hiring practices, in all of our, our, our interventions that we do with students, I think that all of those lead to a way that we can raise our, our diversity in our district.
All right, thank you. Next is Dan.
Great. Thank you. I, I first want to compliment the work that has been done so far in our district. It's something that's been important to me. We've done trainings on racial bias and implicit bias, specifically working with our African-American students. One thing that really stands out to me, the research shows that if a African-American student can have an African-American teacher, their, their approval, their achievement does actually improve. So finding students, mentors and leaders in our classroom, teachers or principals is really important so that they have mentors that look up, that they can look up to, that look like them. And they can have those mentors in the, in their school environment. So we have a lot of work to do still, but it's a, it's an evolving process.
All right, great. Thank you. Next up is Karen for this question.
Thank you. We definitely need more advocacy in this area of diversity, inclusion, and equal representation for all individuals. We, we always had that challenge. We, we do that. We have the Education and Equity Committee, committee going. And this group works to foster a mutual self-respect and understanding among all racial, religious, and ethnic groups. I know as far as our gender, our students with different gender identity issues, there's clubs in the schools that they've been formed to help those kids to integrate better and, and enjoy their school, school life as best they can. We need work in this. We also have a district-wide community with character program running. And I think that's starting with our young kids and teaching them about the values of, you know, learning how to be kind to one another and recognize that we're all unique and different. And we need to really train our, help train our kids. So additional training would be helpful in this area, I think. It's, it'd be a challenge.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Nicole.
Thank you. So I believe the role of the school board in advocating for diversity, inclusion, and equal representation boils down to a couple of different things. First of all, the board has responsibility for making sure that we're, the district is applying policies and procedures. So taking a holistic look at what policies and procedures are in place to really make inclusion a priority in the district and also holding the superintendent accountable for those things as well. So, you know, making sure that she's doing things like developing a strategic recruitment and retention policy or plan rather for instructors of color or, or diverse staff and administration. The other thing is, having an African-American student, have an African-American teacher is very important. But all of our students need teachers from a diverse background because cultural competence is something we have to prepare every Lavonia student for, not only the students of color. So we need to make sure that we have a holistic plan in place that impacts the entire district.
All right, thank you. Tammy, you're up.
Thank you. The role of the board in diversity, I think, one is to keep the conversation going, to make sure that it's at the top of everyone's mind and continue to move forward. I know the board recently, as recently as August, we've continued to update our policies to be more inclusive, to make sure that we're covering everything that we need to. We make sure that we are, our central office staff is continually making sure that we have everything in place. But diversity looks different, I think, for everyone. And I would like to see, you know, again, you know, there are different types of diversity and we need to make sure that all students feel welcomed and valued.
Okay, thank you. And last for this question is Madeline.
Okay, first I want to commend the Lavonia PTSA Council for the diversity and inclusion survey that went out. I actually was speaking to, I think it was Nicole, about the results of that survey and that those were shared out. So I think that's a really great step in the right direction and continuing to follow through with that. In terms of the board, I believe that advocating for diversity and inclusion, equal representation means that we need to assess what the needs are in order to be able to work towards an equitable educational opportunities for students. So knowing what the needs are of our students that are below kind of those gaps that we have and addressing those. Also, as was said earlier, looking at hiring practices because equal representation is important. Representation matters in all classrooms and diversity isn't just color.
All right, thank you. Does anyone want to use the bonus time for this question? Crystal, because you used up 20 seconds of your answer. No, all right, thank you.
I, I'm happy to.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
You gave a free plug.
Okay, great. I do think, I, I, I am so honored to be part of this, this forum right here because I think the diversity of answers that was, that was given is a beautiful thing. I think that everyone is looking to, to enhance our diversity in the district. And everyone has different ideas of what it looks like. And I think that that's the picture of diversity. And I think that great minds working together, and I think that that's the idea of a board of education, is to bring different minds together to make the best decision for all of our students collectively. And so I think that this is just a great example of what the board can do instead of one person deciding, having a group to decide.
Anyone else? All right, Mike?
Thank you, Kelly. Question five. This is going to be a, a short one, 30 seconds. Regarding class sizes, recognizing the impact of the budget, how many students do you think is appropriate to have in a classroom? Please consider both in normal times and in the current pandemic. Dan, you're up first for this question.
Sure. I think class size is incredibly important. If I could wave a magic wand, I would have 16 students in a classroom. We, in Michigan, are, are super at the will of our legislature. So we have to adjust to the budget and 90% of our budget is staff. So every year we look at this, try to improve it as much as we can, but we're limited in our discretionary spending and we have to meet our budget every year.
Thanks, Dan. I know this is a tough timeframe, but we're trying to get this, some of the questions in quicker. Karen, it's now on to you.
Thank you. Oh, jeez. I think what would be appropriate to have in the classroom, again, ideally 20 students would be a great number to shoot for. However, as, as Dan says, we do have to prioritize our finances and stay within those confines. I think 20, 20 students. And I mean, I, being a classroom teacher before, I, I've had upwards of 27, 28 and an extra. When you get to 20, over 25, 26, 27, extra kids make a big difference in your teaching.
Thank you, Karen. Nicole, it's your turn.
I would agree. I think more than 25 is probably too many. But rather than settle on what number I think is appropriate, I think we have to look at what's the best that we can do according to the budget we have in front of us. What are the finances, finances permitting us to do? And then we evaluate based on that. There was a previous question suggesting what would you do with regard to budget cuts? So we have to really look at what is the budget allowing us to do and then choose the number, the smallest number possible according to that budget.
Thank you, Nicole. Tammy, it's your turn.
I would like to say, I think coming up with a, a number for me is difficult. I think every student and every group of students is unique. I think my goal would be to have as few kids in a classroom as we possibly can based on the finances that we have and the resources to be, be able to make that happen. But again, a class size, there, there's a lot of other factors in class sizes besides budget.
Thank you, Tammy. Madeline, it's your turn.
I'd like to say that the silver lining of the pandemic is that it is showing us what smaller class sizes looks like. Again, because we haven't seen these small class sizes in a really long time. And somehow we're making it work. And I know it's not ideal, but it's a point of reference in terms of looking at what is possible. I think that a normal number, it depends on the age of the students, right? Because smaller elementary schools, you would want smaller class sizes, but maybe in high school because the demands are less, that you would be okay with a larger class size number than elementary. Sorry.
Thank you, Madeline. Crystal, it's your turn.
Thanks so much. I think this is a, a great question because it said, it talks about the direction of the board and the priorities of the board. And in, in the discretionary spending, how, how we can prioritize and how we can get to the smaller class size. I think everyone here said smaller. Smaller is better. And one of the things is, what can we do to offset that? If we have larger class sizes, can we put a parapro in there? What can we do and how can we be creative and innovative in the way that we address class size issues? But I am proud the district has continuously put forth a smaller class size due to some of our budget enhancements.
Thank you, Crystal. Would anyone like to use their bonus time?
I should use bonus on that, sorry.
All right, thank you, Kelly. I'll hand it back to you for question six.
All right. Question six is 45 seconds. Besides COVID-19, what do you see as the single biggest challenge for LPS in the next five years and how would you address it? And Karen, you get to start this question.
Thank you. Oh, a challenge for us always, again, I'm going to, I go into that, the school funding. School funding is always an issue. We have been, we have a system that is, is difficult and challenging. We, our system really needs to be kind of remodeled and looking back, you know, people always say, well, doesn't the lottery cover, you know, the state? I don't understand this. Well, the lottery is a small portion of the state's budget. It does go into that. But we need to address funding issues at the state level and we need more advocacy, I think, working towards trying to take a look at a more equitable-based program.
All right, thank you. Nicole, you are next.
I think funding is absolutely one of the biggest challenges for the district over the next five years. And that does have to be something that the board is focused on. And I also see diversity and inclusion as one of the, the major issues as well. And by that, I mean developing a system of cultural competence for all our students, not just, again, focusing on, you know, are we ticking boxes with specific types of, of hires or specific types of programming? But making sure that we create, are creating an inclusive learning environment. So those are the two biggest issues that I see.
Okay, thank you. Next, Tammy.
Thank you. I'm going to go a little bit different route with this. And definitely this is a challenge due to our funding problems. But I'd like to take a better look at the kids that are going into the trades. I think in the last couple of decades, we have really focused on college-ready, college-ready, college-ready with the funding. We've removed all of our different trades and what we called when we were kids, home ec and wood class and shop class. And they don't get those opportunities to be able to see what that's like. I think we need to really start looking at and supporting our kids also that are not going to go to a, a standard four-year college education and need supports for other higher education after their high school education.
Okay, thank you. Madeline, you're next.
Yes, I would agree with the aforementioned in terms of the budget and financing. That is the biggest challenge. I would say secondary to that is looking at proficiency levels. I'd like to make sure that all our graduates are proficient in reading and writing and not just 50%. So that is probably one of the biggest challenges moving. So that is probably one of the biggest challenges moving forward in terms of ensuring equity.
All right, Crystal, you're up.
Thanks so much. I agree with school funding, but that is going to be the role of the state of Michigan. That is outside the scope of the role of the Board of Education. So in terms of funding for us, we get paid from the state by each child that we have in the district. And decreasing enrollment is a huge issue in Bolonia as well as every district across the state. Almost every district is dealing with this. And what happens is we are losing students at buildings because we just do not have that. The kindergarten class is not as big as the graduating class. And unfortunately, the district is going to have to prioritize what we're going to do as we are losing students and how we're going to maintain services and educational offerings that we're offering as we are losing students. And that is the biggest role of the Board of Education is how we combat that issue.
All right, thank you. And Dan, last one for this question.
Sure. I think through my experience on the board, the one thing I've learned is that you may think you know what's going to be the biggest challenges, but it does seem to always change. It's been funding in years. It's been declining enrollment in certain years. But I think the one thing that we know will be constant is student achievement and success. And I think regardless of what gets thrown at us, a pandemic even, that we need to focus on student achievement and success and making sure that we keep quality programs for our students, maintain them, expand them when appropriate, and be agile as student needs change because they always seem to.
All right, thank you. And did anyone want to use their bonus time for this question? Nope, all right.
All right, thank you. So question seven is a 60-second question. Many school buildings house unique programs for our students. These include programs for gifted students and those with special needs, basically everything in between. Having seen a number of buildings close in the last several years, what is your opinion of the impact of these closures on the students and the community? Nicole, you're up first for this question.
I think the impact of these closures, the first thing I would want to evaluate is how are we replacing? You know, because we've closed a building doesn't necessarily mean that the need has disappeared, right? So it's being transferred someplace else. So how are we replacing the services or, you know, that were provided to the students as a result of those buildings having closed? So in terms of impact on the overall community, if we're closing buildings, eliminating programs for students associated with those building closures, what impact is that having on maybe why students are leaving the district or why families are leaving the district? Are they seeking those programs elsewhere outside the district? So I would be interested in understanding a little bit more about why those buildings are closing and how we're replacing what was lost in those building closures.
Thank you, Nicole. Tammy, it's your turn for this question.
Thank you. I've gone through this as a parent prior to being on the board and as well as making one of these decisions on the board. I think the great thing about Bolonia is that we don't lose any programs when we close our schools. If we do see a need to close a building, it's simply because we need to consolidate resources. That also goes back to sound judgment and finances, making sure that we're not overspending. So when we have done this, it is very hard on the community. It was hard on me. We go through a grieving process. We have a community within our schools and it's really difficult. But the outcome for most of the people has been fantastic. When my school was closed and we moved down, we had an absolutely wonderful community once we meshed with the other school. It was a great turnover. And as well as when CAS closed, we've had parents come back that were very upset and very stressed out and said that it turned out to be a great, great transition.
Madeline, it's your turn.
So I believe that communities are impacted by school closures in the sense that they are community schools. And these neighborhood schools are a draw for new families coming into Bolonia. And they come in looking to, and that was my reason for moving into where I lived across the street from Garfield. And so you look for those community schools to draw in new families. And so the impact is definitely felt in that sense and also in terms of property values because you're looking for that community school to determine if this is the place that you want to live. In terms of the students, you worry that if they were, for instance, at a Title I school, they were being provided these services and then at the new school that they're attending, if it doesn't have, if it's not a Title I schools, what kinds of services are they being, are they receiving at their new building? And so just making sure that the students that, you know, needed these services there are still receiving them at their new school.
Thank you, Madeline. Crystal, it's your turn.
Thanks so much. Yes, I was one of those parents. My kids all are, two of my kids went to CAS before it closed. And then we had to transition to a different elementary and it was hard. It is a hard transition. There is nothing easy about starting a new school with a new culture and a new rules and new parents and new families. And so I think one of the biggest things is to acknowledge that it's hard, to acknowledge that this is going to be a transition. And I think one of the things that we need to do as a district is to make sure we know that and we are doing the most that we can to prepare in advance for an effective transition. So what are we doing to pull those kids into the new school? How are we transitioning them? And are we welcoming them? Are we reaching out to them? Do we have a transition playdate? Do we have time for them to come to the school by themselves? And so I think that it does affect the community. And we as a district need to take that on and make sure that we are meeting the needs of the students at the original school and then also the families that are moving to the new school. And I think that that's a real issue that we need to address.
Thank you, Crystal. Dan, it's your 60 seconds now.
Thank you. Just for a little bit of historical perspective, Bolonia used to have about 40,000 students, if I'm correct. And now we've got about 14,000. Families have changed a lot. We know that. And the district's changed throughout the years to reflect the population of students. That doesn't make it easy. It's extremely hard to close schools. People have memories. They've got connections. It leaves scars that have to heal. But I think the silver lining of the district closing buildings over the years is we're in a position where I don't anticipate we'll have to do that in the near future. So right now, our district is stable and steady. And although we've made really hard choices in the past, I think we're ready to continue forward on the path with the buildings we have and build new memories.
Thank you, Dan. Karen, it's your turn to close out this question.
Thank you. Dan's right. We have looked at our enrollment projections going out in the future here. And hopefully, this is not something that we're going to have to be doing in the next five to 10 years. And but in the past, yes, we just went through some difficult closures. And it is difficult on the students, especially our students with special needs that, and our littlest learners. I know our preschool program had to be moved into a different building. Our students with special needs had to adapt and change. I think our district needs to make sure that we are transparent and forthcoming with what we are going to do in the future. If we are going to close a school, we need to make sure that the community trusts us to make these difficult decisions. And trust me, these are the types of things when you sit on a board, you do not want to be doing. But we must do that in some cases and we have had to. So I'm hopeful that we will not have to do that in the future coming up here.
Thank you, Karen. Would anyone like to use their bonus time? Tammy, please.
Thank you. I just want to assure everyone that's watching this. If and when we do close buildings or we move programs, we move programs. Students do not lose their Title I funding if they move schools. They may move from a 100% Title I school into a school that is not 100% Title I, but they do not lose their funding. We do not close programs simply because we're closing a building. And everybody gets to maintain their programs.
Thank you, Tammy. Karen, go ahead. You're on mute still.
Thank you. I would like to piggyback off Tammy there. When we did close those schools, we did not change programming. Our programming stayed the same. We just moved the program into another building. So the impact of the closure was more of the physical moving of the building instead of changing and students didn't lose their programming. So I do want to make that clear too.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move back to Kelly for question eight.
All right, question eight. We are going to start with Tammy and you get 45 seconds for this question. What are some ways we can cut costs while still providing a top-notch school system?
I find it very difficult to say that we can cut anything from our district. We have cut bare bones. Over the last years, we have cut over $40 million out of our budget. Eighty, I'm sorry, 90% of our budget is dictated by union contracts and we don't have the ability to change those and cut those. And our discretionary budget for different things is very small. So I know if we might have to do it, but I have to say that that is going to be a really tough day. And if we have to use our budget to, sorry. And my time's up, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next is Madeline.
I would say that the best way to cut costs is to look at what we are spending money on. For example, in terms of the curriculum, there are books that are being purchased that when they are in the hands of teachers, it's like, why did we receive this? And we have something better. We know something better that can achieve the same results. So looking at how we're spending money in ways that we can be more effective in delivering instruction and those materials that end up adding cost that could definitely be mitigated.
Great, thank you. Crystal, your turn.
Thanks so much. The district has cut significant costs in the past several years. One of the things I think is non-classroom expenses, and that's the thing that we have got to maintain. And I think that we've talked about that before, is that the classroom has got to be prioritized. And so where we cut costs is what do we look at in terms of outside funds that we do? What could we look at in terms of maybe technology, asking the families to send more technology? How can we utilize some of those outside expenses that we are spending that could potentially be put back into the classroom? And I think that some of those are just outside things, capital expenditures that we've been using, that we've been doing. And again, it's very difficult because capital expenses come from a separate budget. So this would have to be general fund is what I'm thinking that people are meaning when they say cut costs. And so it's very difficult. When you go to a school and you're making copies for teachers, the paper is locked up. You have to get paper. I mean, we are not spending atrocious amounts of money in the district. And so I think that that's one of the things, where can we spend, where can we cut that's non-classroom cut and some types of maybe capital expenditures that we can cut costs in?
Okay, thank you. Dan, you're up.
So this question's a little triggering for me, I'll be honest. The, we didn't, there are a couple of years ago, a nonpartisan group called the School Finance Research Collaborative looked at Michigan schools and said that we are underfunding our schools by, on average, $1,000 per pupil. If those students are, have ELL needs, if they have special education needs, that cost goes up significantly. So oftentimes, schools are asked, where can you cut? But we need to change the way we fund our schools and it is a crisis point. We need more resources for our students and more resources for the kids. It has got to be our top priority in the next few years to change how schools are funded.
All right, thank you. Karen, your turn.
Yes, I agree with Dan. We, it is kind of a nervy question because our funding is not, and I know everybody says, oh, we're always talking about funding, funding, but Dan is correct. We do not receive the amount of per pupil funding that each child should deserve over time. I think we, several years back, we took a 400-per-pupil cut and we are still working our way back to a regular per pupil amount that's equitable for our students. The good news is, state budget this year, we're not going to have any cuts in 2021. No cuts to K-12 and we're getting a one-time $65-per-pupil increase. They're gonna, so hopefully we don't, I'll stop, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Nicole, you're up.
I think the first thing for me is we have to define what does that term "top-notch school system" mean? If that means that we're talking about, we want the district to be highly performing and we want student performance to be improved, then I think we have to look at the budget holistically and then realign our priorities so that whatever resources we're spending are driving toward those initiatives, right? Driving toward the high performance and the student improvement. To the extent that we can realign those things, there's items that, you know, are contractually obligated and things like that. But to the extent that we would have the ability, then we need to make sure that our priorities in terms of spending are aligned with the performance improvement that we're seeking.
All right, thank you. Did anyone want to use their bonus time for this question?
Sure, I will.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
So this is just an opportunity for me to say that every year you see headlines that high school funding, things like that. But in those, that may be true in real dollars. But when you adjust for inflation, we've actually seen huge cuts in our state's education. The cost of fuel, energy, all these things go up every year and we don't get the increase. So every year we're doing more with less and it's consistent every single year for the past decade.
All right, thank you. Did anyone else want to use bonus time? Nope, all right, Mike?
Okay, thank you. The next question, nine, is a 60-second question. What role do you see the school board playing in updating our curriculum so that it is more inclusive and representative of all perspectives? Madeline, you're up first for this question.
In terms of updating our curriculum, I think that would be, it was stated that there's a diversity and inclusion type of equity engagement committee. And so I would think that that would be part of their purpose is to look at ways to be more inclusive within the classroom and the curriculum is the best way. I think we definitely need to look at, I would say, staff. Anytime that you're looking to change or update curriculum, you definitely want teacher input. I don't know that our teachers have enough of that perspective to, and this is just a broad statement, right? Which is the reason that we're doing these diversity trainings. That, so looking for outside resources to help us guide that decision-making process.
Thank you, Madeline. Crystal, it's your turn.
Thanks so much. Just to be clear, the board does not choose curriculum for the district. And I think that that is one of the pieces that is confusing about what the role of the board is and what the role of the administration is. The administration is the professional educators. We are not professional educators. We are overseers. We, the board oversees the administration of the district. We do not choose curriculum. And I think that that is one of the biggest misconceptions out there. We lead in terms of what we'd like to see and we give suggestions in terms of making sure that it's inclusive and representative. But that is really up to the administrative staff to choose curriculum as the professional educators. And for them, we can advise to make sure that they have all seats at the table so everybody is represented and that there is a diversity of thought and diversity of culture represented at the tables. But each curriculum is chosen by a group of teachers. And so they spend hours and hours evaluating a curriculum that is not the role of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Crystal. Dan, you have 60 seconds.
Thank you. This is a teacher-driven process in our district. And it is something that our teachers take very seriously. And I have heard, every year we get presented with the curriculum to ultimately approve once the district's gone through the steps to select curriculum. I've heard oftentimes that when they're picking curricular materials, it represents cultural perspectives, especially in our foreign language. So we need to continue making that an emphasis of, for our teachers when they're going through this process. But, you know, knowing that it's a priority, allowing our teachers to, to make those right choices for our students.
Thank you, Dan. Karen, it's your turn.
Yes, as my role is, I would probably be looking at that Education and Equity Committee, making sure we have staff on that represented and staff in our, in community stakeholders coming in to take a look at what they, types of curriculum they would like to see that is more inclusive and representative of all perspectives. I think that curriculum is, they work hard on. Really trying to, we've recently been able to purchase new books and new technology or online type materials that are more up to date, because I know that was one of the things that we have been working on. And we've been able to purchase more materials. So I think looking at that Equity Committee, Education Equity Committee, and having our teachers make sure that they are using curriculum that is inclusive is very important.
Thank you, Karen. Nicole, it's your turn.
So sorry, unmute problems. I see the role of the board in participating in this to be a couple of different things. One, setting clear expectations as far as what it is that we believe the curriculum would need to look like for it to be inclusive and representative of all perspectives. And then making sure that, that the Equity, Engagement and Equity Committee, or whatever committee, any committee that's going to be involved in selecting the curriculum, has the resources and the training necessary to be making wise choices with regard to that curriculum. And then also making sure that we have feedback from all stakeholders with regard to the curriculum and whether, once it's selected, it's actually representative and it's addressing all needs, it's inclusive in nature. And then evaluating whether or not the choice was, was accurate. Do we need to choose different curriculum? I think it's an ongoing process in terms of the, the board setting the expectations and then making sure that the committee that's selecting the curriculum has the right resources.
Thank you, Nicole. Tammy, you can close this question out.
Thank you. I think there are some things that the board can do in order to guide this process. We talked about the board aligning the finances to our priorities. One of those things that we can do is to make sure that we provide enough funding for professional development to help get into our classrooms and to really make an impact with individual teachers. Sometimes it's that you can set a curriculum, but sometimes it's how the curriculum is taught. We also have to remember that standards and curriculum are different. Curriculum is how the material is presented. And it, we have a set of state standards that we have to follow. And I, these teachers have to follow a very rigorous curriculum in order to meet these standards. So I think working directly with the teachers to get them the tools that they need will help with this issue.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. Would anyone like to use their bonus time for this question? Okay, I'm gonna hand it back to Kelly.
All right, question 10. We'll have 60 seconds to answer this. Given that Livonia's student population is increasingly more diverse, what is the role of LPS in recruiting and retaining administrators and teachers that reflect this increasing diversity? And Crystal, you'll go first.
Thanks so much. I think that one of the things is that it is Livonia Public Schools, I think it was said earlier, representation matters, and I think that that's really important. And right now, Livonia Public Schools is a very well sought after employer. We have a lot of people applying for Livonia Public Schools. And so I think that one of the things that we can do is to, excuse me, is to better train and teach our, our, our teachers and our recruiters. What are the implicit, is there any implicit bias in any of our recruitment and any of our hiring processes that enable, that, that don't enable all, all, all teachers to, to rise to the top? And so I think that that's one of the things, is really looking at where we are in terms of any implicit bias that's out there, because we do have a lot of teachers. We have a large pool to select from in terms of, of teachers. People want to teach in our district. And so where can we really focus on making sure that our diversity in terms of our student population is, in terms of our teacher population, is reflective of our student population?
Okay, thank you. Dan, your turn.
Yeah, I, I think making it a priority is very important. And it's something I've talked about since I've joined the board is that, you know, I think that our, the people in the classroom should reflect the population. And it may not be exactly one for one, but we should look like the community we serve. And I know that our, our administration understands that. And we will continue to go out and we'll look for people who have diverse backgrounds and also who have experienced teaching in diverse sets of students. So we've made some hires recently that I'm very proud of. I think they're doing a great job. They reflect some of those priorities, but continuing that.
All right, thank you. Karen, your turn.
I do think that this is something that we can do some work on. One of the issues that may happen is we do have a large pool of candidates that apply. And sometimes we don't get the diverse applicants. And if we do, we are equal opportunity educational employers. So we, we hold a standard and we look for, we vet and carefully vet and interview our teachers very well. And we are able to garner great teachers in our district. And I think it is an area that we can improve on when we're looking for that. We also, I think there's also an issue possibly with our pool of candidates in colleges right now. I don't know how many teachers and administrators are going into teaching. It seems like we have a bit of a, we've had a lull in our teaching, educational processes in college. But hopefully recruiting and retaining new teachers that are diverse is, is something we can work on.
All right, thank you. Nicole?
So the role of LPS in recruiting and retaining administrators and teachers that reflect diversity in the district begins with a strategic recruitment initiative that includes all aspects of the employee lifecycle. So we need to look at, how are we recruiting and attracting a candidate, a candidate pool? If we're not getting the candidates, that means that we need to be more proactive in going out into the communities that surround us and, and encouraging teachers and administrators of all backgrounds to look, look at Livonia as a potential employer. Then, once we've attracted talent of color or diverse talent, how are we retaining them? Are we creating an inclusive workplace where people actually want to stay and teach and work here in this district for long periods of time? So it's a multifaceted process, and I think that we have to look at, you know, how are we recruiting? And once we've recruited, how are we retaining? And so we need to really be focused on creating an environment that is inclusive and welcomes all backgrounds.
Okay, thank you very much. Tammy, your turn.
So I think one of the things that we need to do is remember that the school is part of our community. And part of increasing the diversity within our community is making our community as a whole welcoming to everyone and making them feel comfortable to come into our district. As much as we'd like to go out and recruit, we can't make people come to our district. So when we have signs on our expressways saying that it's, don't come into Livonia because there are some racial issues, we have picketers saying how horrible Livonia is to diverse groups of people. I think the community needs to come together and say, we are a community that welcomes everyone. And in that way, we're going to get more diverse people to come into our community because we're welcoming them rather than telling them that we are not welcoming.
Thank you, Tammy. Madeline, you're up last for this question.
Okay, so I will echo a lot of what Nicole stated in that we need to look at, what are we currently doing to increase diversity? How are we hiring? What are our hiring practices? And looking at whatever we have been doing clearly has not been meeting the mark. And then looking to expand outside of our current hiring practices to become more diverse. Also, I truly believe that, you know, you continue to work and stay employed in places that you feel welcome and that you love where you are, that you feel that you bring value and that you are valued. And so making sure that these environments and these schools really are welcoming to staff and to the families in the area. And it starts from the top down.
All right, thank you. Does anyone want to use their bonus time? No? All right. Mike, your turn.
So we're running low on time, so we're gonna move to a final question. Unfortunately, we're not gonna get to these. Oh, man. Oops. Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, so we will have a final question, then we will go on to our, our closing statements. But we wanted to add a little bit of, an opportunity for positivity in a really quick soundbite. And the way we thought best to do that was to go through each individual candidate and ask them to describe Livonia Public Schools in 10 words or less. And I lost track of who was up first. Who is up first on this one, Mike?
If we're following the order, it's gonna be Dan.
Dan, Dan, you are up first. 10 words or less, my friend.
What? All these other people get time to think of their words.
Six, seven, eight. No, I'm kidding.
It's nine or 11, you're in trouble.
So an engaged community of learners that is evolving and improving constantly. That's nine, I think, because it's close, right?
I think it works. You could end with yay, a nice flourish, we'll say.
All right.
All right, so next up is gonna be Karen Bradford.
All right, Livonia, Livonia, am I on? Okay. Livonia is an exemplary learning community that inspires and motivates all students. Was that 10?
I wasn't counting. I just knew if it was long, we'd notice.
Okay, good.
Nicole, you are up next.
I was just counting my words. Okay. Continuing to realize its commitment to excellent instruction. I think that was under 10.
Eight or nine-ish by my count, but I lost my fingers, too. Tammy, you are up next.
I would like to go with a list. Amazing, hardworking, caring, committed. We just, amazing, amazing. They are amazing. So I'll add amazing to the rest of them, but it's just a really amazing and caring community.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Madeline, you are up.
Madeline, you're on mute.
Figures the last question. Livonia Public Schools, the community is resilient, involved, passionate, and fortunate to have highly qualified staff. I went over.
And Crystal, you are up.
Last one. Focused on student achievement, cultivated with employee capacity, supported by fiscal responsibility, and wrapped in climate and culture.
I think she went over. All right, disqualified. All right, so we, we thank her that. And that, that was when we were discussing the questions to ask, we needed to have something that was just utterly positive and would throw everybody off of their normal guard. I know a lot of times our candidates will prep for these things and try and have too many of those, those, you know, ready responses. And I think throwing a curveball is exactly what a school board member needs to know how to receive. At least in my experience in working with school board trustees over the last eight years or so.
In the bonus time, can I do a haiku or a limerick?
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll see what we can, we can do for the next election. Maybe we'll have a, you know, interpretive dance. That's, everything's open. We, you know, we're, we're all for it. All right, so we will now begin with closing statements, which I believe are still following that same round robin tactic. Is that correct, Michael?
No.
No?
Read, read the slide, Rob. Reverse order of opening statements.
Oh, isn't that convenient? I had that right here. Wow, how lovely. All right.
So Dan will be first.
Dan will be first once again with a closing statement.
First, I want to thank everyone who put the forum on today. Obviously, this was very enlightening. It was a great experience for everyone to be able to hear from everyone running for the board. I want to also thank everyone who's running. It's, I know I've done this a couple of times now that it's difficult to put yourself out there and, you know, really open yourself up for criticism. So, but it makes all of us better by engaging in this process. It's been an honor to be on the Livonia School Board for the last six years. I really enjoy it. It's, you know, through all the stress, it's a lot of fun. And seeing what the kids achieve means a lot to me. So if the community chooses me to continue on the board, I will be very, very honored. And I really appreciate being on the board and all the community does for our schools and keeping them outstanding for the years to come. So thank you all again. And if you hung in and listened to this whole thing, thank you for engaging in that way.
Thank you, Dan. Next up for a closing statement will be Crystal.
Sorry, I had some technical difficulties, but I'm back. I'm back. Mike, I'm all set. All right. It has been a tremendous privilege to serve Livonia on the board. I'm proud of our students and our staff. Thank you for entrusting me with the leadership of Livonia Public Schools. I strive to bring value to our district and to be a champion for all students. I have a unique voice with four kids in the district, so I represent a deep knowledge of the daily issues facing our district of over 14,000 students. I can provide wisdom and insights to board discussions and decisions based on my knowledge of the district in my vast areas that I'm coming to contact with staff, students, and parents every day in our district. One of the things that somebody asked me is, what do you want your legacy to be as a board, as a Livonia Public School Board of Education member? I'm not looking to build a legacy on Livonia Public Schools Board of Education. I'm looking to have a voice, to be the voice of the parent on the Board of Education, to be the voice to help make wise decisions that drive Livonia Public Schools and continue to drive Livonia Public Schools to be the best that it can be to serve all of our students and all of our family and all of our community. I love this quote that I found from Carol Ann Tomlinson. It says, excellence in education is when we do everything we can to make sure they become everything they can. And that is really what being on the Board of Education is, is to try to make sure that every student that we provide can become everything that they can be. Thank you for the privilege to serve.
Thank you, Crystal. Next up, we have Madeline.
Okay, so advocacy in the classroom sometimes looks like a special education teacher stepping into a seventh grade classroom to remind the science teacher that his students with cognitive impairment will be graded according to their individual goals. This later led to a team approach to student learning and identifying two objectives for his class, for these students. At the end of the year, these students knew that cells are the basic unit of life and that everything is made up of atoms. The science teacher also walked away with a newfound love for special education, going on to pursue endorsement. So as a special education teacher and homeless community liaison, I've been advocating for students for appropriate educational experiences and learning environments for all. I'm running for office because I believe that representation matters. The voices of community stakeholders, parents, educators, and students should all be represented at the decision-making table. I am looking forward to the opportunity to pour back into this community that has given my family so much. Let me be your advocate. Vote for me.
Thank you, Madeline. And next up, we have Tammy.
Sorry, I'm used to coming after Nicole. I would like to thank the PTS Council for, and the members of the audience and those watching at home. Well, I guess we don't have an audience, do we? This has been a great opportunity for me to express my in-depth experience and my commitment to public education. Whether or not you currently have children in the district, public education affects everyone. Having an outstanding school system directly impacts our lives and our community. Staying relative, relevant and competitive while maintaining a balanced budget is paramount. Advocating for adequate funding is a daily pursuit. We must continue to fight for our children and their right to education that they deserve. I am passionate about public education and have faith that Livonia Public Schools works to maintain high standards. I will work to continue moving our district into the future and to maintain the excellence that our residents come to expect. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. And next up, we have Nicole.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you as well to everyone who's participated this evening, who planned this event, and to everyone who's watching. And I want to say that I got into this race because my own children's experience in LPS motivated my decision to do so. I saw what I thought were areas of opportunity and decided that I could use my experience to make an impact. I don't have the instructional experience of some of the candidates, and I also don't have lengthy experience as an LPS parent or volunteer. But what I do offer is professional experience in things like curriculum design and training and advocacy. I also have a passion for academic excellence and inclusion and experience in creating diverse and inclusive workplaces. In fact, I wrote the Commitment to Diversity for the company I work for, where I'm responsible for close to 300 employees, and have designed, you know, strategies for recruitment, training, and retention of diverse workforces. So I'd like to work on developing a strategic plan like that for the district. I think we owe it to every student in the district to make inclusion a priority right now, and I can use my professional experience to help make that happen. I also have a sincere belief that this district is committed to excellence in academics, and so whatever I can do and whatever experience I can bring to bear on behalf of the district to drive that forward, I'm interested in doing, and that's why I'm asking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, we have Karen.
Thank you. I thank the LPTSA Council for hosting this forum, for all the candidates that participated. Education and strong schools builds and enhances strong communities. I applaud the Council for taking the time to organize this virtual forum, and for the voters for taking the time to view this forum in order to hear our opinions and viewpoints. Livonia Public Schools needs strong, experienced board, one that can make difficult decisions affecting the future of this district. The board needs committed members who will listen, are open minded, and will work diligently, respectfully, and collaboratively. I have all those qualities, and I've utilized them to the best of my ability in my service as a trustee these past four years. I am not perfect, no one is, but I work hard and I understand that I have a duty and commitment to make sure that our students entrusted to us receive the best educational opportunities and experiences. The effective leadership I have shown continues to make me a strong candidate. I hope you will support me as one of your candidates for the Livonia Public Schools School Board on Tuesday, November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Mike, before we close up, do you have any additional announcements?
No, just on the final slide.
All right. Well, thank you very much. So first, I would like to give very special thanks to the members of this committee, specifically Amanda Gersbrand, our Livonia PTSA Council President, Kelly Doomer, our immediate past president, and a double, triple thank you to Mr. Michael Testa, who, as we've been seeing all through this pandemic, we need a lot of flexibility. I think he improved the forum rather than just tried to put one together. The interactivity and the ability to see the questions on the screen with timing was incredible, so a very special thank you to Mike. We appreciate you very much on our, on our council every single day. But also, obviously, a very special thank you to our six candidates for joining us this evening. Madeline Costa, Tammy Bonifield, Karen Bradford, Dan Centers, Crystal Frank, and Nicole Hoskins Woodrow. Most importantly, thank you to our viewer who will be viewing this as it is being recorded. It will be sent out. Our viewer and voter are the most important person in this situation. Please do feel free to watch this a number of times, but most importantly, make sure that you vote on or before November the 3rd this year. That is the most important way to have your voice heard. Again, for the Livonia PTSA Council, I'm Rob Gerswicki. Thank you and have a great evening.